Okay. Good evening. Hello and welcome to the November 11th, 2013 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. So in accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on November 7th, 2013 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. I'd like to have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely, Mr. Kinz. Ms. Bogachewski? Ms. Santa Fante?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Wassat? And Mr. Kinz?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. We're officially at order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And today happens to be November 11th, which is Veterans Day. So Happy Veterans Day. I'd like to read, actually, I have here with me, The American Patriots Almanac, which was written by William J. Bennett and John T. Cribb. William Bennett was a former Secretary of Education under Ronald Reagan. And this is what he had posted for November 11th, Veterans Day. "In the early mornings, in the early morning hours of November 11th, 1918, representatives of France, Britain, and Germany met in a railroad car near Campyane, France, to sign an armistice ending World War I, or the Great War, as it was known at the time. The ceasefire took effect at 11:00 a.m. that day, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. Up and down the trenches after four long years of the most horrific fighting the world had yet known, the guns fell silent. The roar 'stopped like a motor car hitting a wall,''one U.S. soldier wrote to his family. Soldiers on both sides slowly climbed out of the earthworks. Some danced, some cheered, some cried for joy, some stood numb. The Great War had left some nine million soldiers dead and another 21 million wounded. No one knows how many millions of civilians died. Much of Europe lay in ruins. But finally, with the armistice, it was 'all quiet on the Western Front.'" For many years, November 11th was known as Armistice Day to honor those who fought in World War I. In 1954, Congress changed the name to Veterans Day to recognize all American veterans. Every November 11th at 11:00 a.m., the nation pays tributes to its war-dead with the laying of a presidential wreath at the tomb of the unknown soldier in Arlington National Cemetery outside Washington, D.C. But Veterans Day honors more than the dead. Memorial Day, observed in May, is for remembering soldiers who lost their lives in the service of their country. Veterans Day is set aside to honor and thank all who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces, particularly 23 million living veterans. So we would like to thank our brave men and women who have served and are serving so that we have the freedoms to do all of this. Again, Happy Veterans Day. Another note, before we continue on with the agenda, is last Tuesday, and part of the freedoms that our veterans protect is our elections. So last week, you had the first November elections for Board of Education members for the township of Hillsborough. And when you take into account all of Hillsborough's votes, Millstone's votes, the mail-in ballots and provisionals, that those numbers have been updated by the county and the official totals, there were three people that were running. I'll do them in reverse order. So I myself, Tom Kinz, had 3,903 votes. Newcomer Dev Dudda had 4,028 votes. And Greg Gillette had 5,163 votes. So congratulations to those who ran. And we look forward to the reorganization, which will be the first meeting in January of 2014. So continuing on with the agenda, we have the correspondence that's as in the agenda. And now I'll hand it off to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few pieces of good news I'd like to share with the board and the public this evening. I am pleased to announce that Hillsborough High School senior Alex Luckenbaugh and junior Victoria Ciparulo participated in the All-State Opera Festival at the Paramus High School. Adjudicators were members of and performers at the Metropolitan Opera. Alex was the third-ranked male vocalist, seventh place overall, and Victoria was the eighth-place female, 13th place overall. Both students will be performing their solos at the All-State Opera Festival to be held this Saturday, November 16th, at Paramus High School. Let's give a big congratulations to both Alex and Victoria. On Saturday, October 19th, the Hillsborough High School marching band performed in the U.S. Bands New Jersey State Competition at Rutgers University. The band competed against 55 other bands from around the state and placed third. Congratulations to our Hillsborough High School marching band. Congratulations also goes out to Aris Health and Physical Education teacher, Mr. Michael Davis, who took first place overall in the Princeton Half Marathon on Sunday, November 3rd. Way to go, Mr. Davis. Nice thing for our physical education teacher at Aris. Let's give him a round of applause. And also spotlighting one of our other teachers, last year, Hillsborough High School visual art teacher Veronica DeGroot appeared and won a national television show on the Food Network called The Sugar Dome. Based on that success, Ms. DeGroot was requested to appear on two shows this October. The Food Network's Halloween Wars, and that was a design and baking show, and The Rachel Ray Show, where she demonstrated her artistic and baking talents by combining pumpkin and cake carving to create a Halloween centerpiece in 30 minutes. Congratulations, Ms. Veronica DeGroot. We also are continuing our spotlight on students, which gives us an opportunity to share all the good things that are going on within our schools. Tonight, we have students from Woods Road School, and the students will present a class Voice Thread collaboratively created as a science review on their properties of water unit. So at this time, I'd like to invite up Ms. Howe, principal of Woods Road School. Ms. Howe?
Good evening. Thank you. Mrs. Green and Mrs. Shropshire and students, come on up, please. We are thrilled to be here this evening to share with you just one example of how we integrate technology into our classrooms, into our daily practice. Woods Road School students will be presenting a class Voice Thread. Mrs. Green's class will be presenting a science review on properties of water, while Mrs. Shropshire's class will be creating a Voice Thread on fiction review. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Shropshire, and she will talk more about her class. So, welcome.
My name is Ashley Shropshire. I am new to Woods Road School. It's my first year here. Tonight, our fourth graders will be presenting a new cloud application called Voice Thread. Voice Thread is a totally web-based program that allows you to place collections of media-like images, videos, documents, and presentations at the center of an asynchronous conversation. Students have the ability to comment on the content displayed using their choice of video, audio, or text. I'm going to introduce Ms. Green.
Hi. My name is Alyssa Green, and my students and I are very excited to share our experience using Voice Thread with you. Before we begin, we would like to thank a few individuals that went above and beyond to assist us with this project. First, thank you to Ms. Howe for inviting us to present this evening and for her continued support. Also, we would like to thank Mrs. Rothblatt for working collaboratively with us and our students as we continue the implementation of technology in our classroom. Lastly, we would like to thank the tech department for your patience, encouragement, and guidance as we encounter technology challenges along the way. Our class collaboratively designed a Voice Thread as a science review on the unique properties of water. After learning about water properties through a multitude of science experiments, students then worked with a partner to become an expert on one property. Together, they designed a slide in Google Presentation using a picture to represent their property, and then developed a discussion question to guide a class conversation. Once the presentation was uploaded into Voice Thread, students then had the capabilities to respond to each question through text, audio, or video. This program was the perfect use of technology for students to collaboratively review the unique properties of water. We hope you enjoy our presentation.
(speaking in a foreign language)
Why is water probably universal solvent? Could you think of an example that shows this property?
Water is called the universal solvent because everything put inside will dissolve. For example, if you put in some coffee and water, it will dissolve evenly.
Water is called the universal solvent because almost everything dissolves in it. An example is food coloring. When you put food coloring in the water, you have to mix it around for it to dissolve evenly.
What happens when water molecules are near each other?
When water molecules are near each other, they cling together forming a dome-shaped drop. This also explains why water drops stick to other water drops on your skin after you wash your hands.
When water molecules are near each other, they stick together because of high surface tension. They form a dome shape or a bubble shape.
How do fish and other aquatic animals survive underneath this frozen lake?
Fish and other aquatic animals survive underneath frozen lakes because they stay at the bottom of the lake, whereas liquid. The top of the lake would be frozen because it's closest to the cold air. Water freezes from the top to the bottom.
Fish and other sea animals can live under frozen lakes. They can survive because only the top part is frozen. Water freezes top to bottom.
How does water change state? Can you think of a time when you saw water in the middle of changing state?
Water changes state. It changes when heat is added or taken away. For example, when I have hot soup and I put ice cubes in it, the solid ice dissolves into the soup and becomes a liquid.
Water changes state because of heat. During the winter, when I went outside, I saw an icicle dripping and changing into the liquid state. It did this because the temperature increased and got warmer.
Describe what is happening to the water molecules in this picture.
When water is boiling, the molecules move really fast. They can move freely because they have a lot of room to move.
When water is boiling, the molecules are moving really fast and are spread out. Some of the liquid turns into steam, which is a form of water vapor.
How is water a reusable resource?
Water is a reusable resource because the water cycle has been going on since the earliest. We could even be drinking the same water as dinosaurs.
Water is a reusable resource because of the water cycle. As we, as water goes through the cycle, it comes back to Earth so we can use it again and again.
Why are molecules closest together in a solid and furthest apart in a gas?
Water molecules are closest together in a solid and furthest apart in a gas. Gas flows around freely, and solids are a definite shape.
If I filled up an ice cube tray halfway with water, why would the ice cube be bulging out of the tray?
When water freezes, expands and bulges out.
Ice would be bulging out of the tray because water expands when frozen. This happened when I put a cup of water in my freezer.
Where can you find water in a solid state?
You can find water in a solid state in ice cubes, glaciers, and ice caps and more.
You can find water in a solid state when it is hail. The air is so cold and below 32 degrees Fahrenheit that it remains as solid as it falls from the clouds.
What does it look like when you put food coloring in water? Can you think of something that you drink that also dissolves in water?
Put food coloring in water, it dissolves evenly. If you put lemonade and mix in water, it will, it will make the water a pink or yellow color depending on the lemonade you put in. It would dissolve evenly.
It looks like the water has completely changed color. Another thing that dissolves in water that I drink is hot chocolate powder.
I would like to introduce our hard-working students, Sarah Roser, Alexis Matthew, and Nicholas Drossi. They are going to discuss their opinions on using Voice Thread as a science review, their favorite parts of using this program, and how technology has had a positive impact on their learning.
I enjoyed using Voice Thread as a properties of water review for many reasons. First, it was fun that the whole class worked together to create a science review rather than our teacher giving us a worksheet to fill out. It was fun to work with the partner to become an expert on one property. Next, we came up with a good discussion question that our classmates could answer. When our class Google Presentation was uploaded into Voice Thread, we got to record our responses to each question. We could record or type a comment about each of the slides that our classmates put on. It was also fun being able to add our pictures to Voice Thread so that when we left a comment, our picture would show up on the side. It was really fun to use this cool program to help us become better scientists.
Great job. Excellent. First, great job. (applause)
I loved using Voice Thread. My favorite part would have to be when I recorded myself responding to each question. If I didn't want to record my voice through video, I also had the option to type my response or just record it without the video. I also really liked choosing a picture with my partner that went along with the water property that we were focusing on. I thought it was really cool that we could come up with a question so that we could review everything that we've been learning. I think Voice Thread will really help me when I'm ready to study for my test because I could see what all my classmates thought about each question. We all have different opinions and points of view about each property. Voice Thread is an awesome tool for learning.
Technology has helped me become a better student because we can learn so much using our tablets, Chromebooks, and through the computers in our school lab. We use technology in every subject almost every single day. Some of the amazing apps we use on our tablets are Quizlet, Voice Thread, ScoopPad, Socrative, Brain Pop, and so much more. We also have websites available on our tablet like Discovery Education where we can watch educational videos. We can even get to our class Google site from our tablet, which has a lot of amazing links for everything that we're learning about in school. The greatest part about all of this technology is that we can use all of it at home. Technology has really helped me become the best fourth grader ever.
Awesome job, guys. Okay. For our Voice Thread review, we practiced the important beginnings of writing, leads and main characters. For this project-
Leads are so important because (laughs).
For this project, we created a PowerPoint presentation where we worked as a class to create discussion. After creating our slides, students used Chromebooks and made text-to-world, text-to-text, and text-to-self connections by commenting on each slide. By using Voice Threads, students display creativity, higher-order thinking, and teamwork. Overall, this was a great use of technology in our classroom, and we're really excited to show off all of our hard work.
Leads are so important because they catch a reader's attention. For example, you don't want yours to sound like this. Sally loves the park. Her mom drove her there. She, she loves her friend Jess. She saw her friend Jess there. You want yours to sound like this. Sally went to the park. She loves the park. Her mom drove her there. When she saw her friend Jess there, she hugged her so tight that Jess's lungs almost popped out. That's what you want your lead to sound like. You always want the beginning of a story to have more detail than the, than less detail.
This is one of the many examples of students using the text feature through Voice Thread.
I think a good lead would be this. Boom. The robbers rushed out of the bank with a bag of money. The guards called the police. The robbers were cornered by the police. What were they going to do?
I gasped as I stared at my brand-new. Bam! The door is shut.
Rancher Hicks lived out west where it was dry night and day. As far as the eye could see, there was nothing, not even a single tree. Nothing much ever happened far out where Mr. Hicks lived.
Then one day, when Rancher Hicks was digging for potatoes, he found gold coins. And then he turned around, and he saw trees, bushes, cactuses, fully grown and alive. And he also saw some buffalo, antelope, and moose. My heart was pounding like a drum. I was so tired that I felt like rubber. Then all of a sudden, I remembered that I had water and some soap in my bag. So as I was running, I slipped my bag off my back and grabbed the water and soap and then mixed them together. Dump. I dumped, I dumped the soapy water on the road, and he fell down. The cops ran over to us and said, "Are you okay?" I said, "Just fine."
Character traits are really important because it tells you what the character is and how he acts and how the book is good or not. For example, there is a book called Diary of the Wimpy Kid. Greg is a funny guy, but he usually gets in trouble.
In this story, Stanley's traits are hard-working because he does, he does his best to dig holes for the warden. He's also a good friend because he helps the owl get back on his feet and he teaches him to read.
In great writing, you want to tell the reader about your character. You want the reader to be able to picture the characters in their mind so the reader can understand your story better.
In my book, the main character Amanda is scared because she gets sent to the past to solve a problem that went wrong. She is scared, she is scared on the outside but is always happy on the inside. She loves to dress in bright colors and hang out with her friends.
I would like to introduce my eager fourth graders, Neil Patel, Sophie Weinberger, and Wybo Potlory. They will discuss their opinions on how technology has had a positive impact on their learning, their favorite parts of the cloud application, and the overall use of Voice Thread in our classroom.
I think technology has helped me become a better student in spelling and math. Technology has helped me in spelling because we use a website called Spelling City. It has games and practice tests to help me study. Technology also helps me in math because we use this game called Factor Samurai on our tablets. Factor Samurai helps me learn prime numbers. I know my prime number is a lot better now. Finally, I am a new student at Woods Road School. At my old school, we had less technology, which made it harder to learn. At WRS, websites and tablets help me learn faster. Also, with Chromebooks, more people can type up their work. At my old school, we had the media center once a week. Now I can use the Chromebooks whenever I want.
My favorite parts about Voice Thread are how it has choices. For example, you can type, talk, or even record a video. If you're shy, like some of my classmates, including me, you can type. But if you're crazy confident, you may make a video. Also, I like how you can see what your friends are saying. It shows how creative my classmates can be.
I enjoy using Voice Thread as a realistic fiction review because it helped me learn about leads. You can listen to conversations and learn from other people's comments. For example, on Slide 1, if you weren't sure about the dialogue lead, I could read my friend's answer and learn about it.
Thank you. What a wonderful job. Let's give them a nice round of applause. Thank you. Well done. We hope you enjoyed our presentation of Voice Threads. Thank you.
I was so impressed with how articulate these young people are. I mean, it's not easy at nine and 10 years old to talk in front of so many people. Let's give them another big round of applause. Excellent job, guys. And now I'd like to shift over to Triangle School. We also have our friends from Triangle. I had a wonderful opportunity to join the Triangle staff and students as they recognized the veterans this morning during Veterans Day celebration. And I was touched and moved, and I'm so happy that you're here this evening to share some of this with our board as well as with the, with the public. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the principal of Triangle School, Ms. Lisa Heisel.
Good evening, everyone. We were really glad to have you there today, Dr. Schiff. When I took over as principal of Triangle School, we started our first Veterans Day, and that was Veterans Day of 2008. So today was the sixth annual Triangle School Veterans Day. I'm going to invite all of the students from Triangle School who would like to join us and sing, come up in front, and Mrs. Crick, our music teacher, go right up in front. Stand in front of the H. Our reach teacher, Mrs. Cassell, has magnified this program for us year after year. Today, we had 45 veterans of the Armed Forces at Triangle School in addition to our superintendent and many other people. All 392 students sang this song today, and there wasn't a dry eye in the house. So I'm quite sure that those of you listening now are going to join us in the weeping, and it's a beautiful tribute to our servicemen and women. And it's a beautiful tribute to our servicemen and women. And if you can imagine that magnified by about another 370 voices, you can kind of understand what I was talking about. We have heard some really wonderful things from our veterans, including many men who said that they never felt welcomed home until the first time they came to our Triangle School Veterans Day celebration. So on behalf of the Triangle School community, Happy Veterans Day.
Happy Veterans Day. That was wonderful. And what a, what a wonderful way to honor those who have served and who continue to serve our country overseas and domestically. And that's all that I have this evening.
We'll take a five-minute recess so that the kids from Woods Road School and Triangle School can get home and get some sleep. We'll, we'll continue on. It's a five-minute recess. Thank you. Okay, we're back. Continuing on with the agenda, we have approval of the minutes. I'll first start with entertaining a motion to approve the October 14, 2013 executive session minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, well, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstentions? Okay, that passes. Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the October 14, 2013 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the October 28, 2013 executive session minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. And lastly, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the October 28, 2013 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. And first, we'll open the floor to the public for new business. If you'd like to discuss on new business, please come up to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, once again. George Cofino, resident of Hillsborough, New Jersey, 311 Spader Court. I'm not sure if this is where I'm supposed to do this or not, but I am here once again in, to request one of the agenda items to be tabled. And I'm here in support of Rich Rosenbloom in his position as the Hillsborough Middle School softball coach. I spoke at the meeting a couple of weeks ago along with a handful of girls. I believe that there's a good contingent, larger contingent here tonight in support of Rich Rosenbloom that have more to say than I can possibly say. So I would just like to have the board once again consider tabling this hiring decision until more investigation has been done as to why Rich Rosenbloom was asked not to return as softball coach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cofino.
Good evening. Oh, sorry. Okay. My name is Donna Conrad, and I did send the board of ed an email, but for, this is just for all who haven't read it. My name's Donna Conrad, and I'm currently a senior at Hillsborough High School. I played for the middle school team in both 7th and 8th grade. Playing middle school softball was a great experience, and having Coach Rosenbloom during these two seasons was a vital part of the success and fun we had that makes middle school softball unforgettable. Coach Rosenbloom taught us way more than just softball, and that only added to our success. Rosenbloom is all about school first. He used to tell us, "You're a student-athlete. The student comes first because it's more important." Whenever we had a game, he would put a quote up in the locker room, whether it be about softball, sports, or life, we always discussed the quote whenever there was a new one on the board. Looking back on it now, I realize why he gave us those quotes, and that was to teach us something about life without sitting down and giving us a lesson on it. He always taught us to act with class and respect. He used to say, "You're representing the name on the front of the jersey, and how you act reflects not only your team, but you, the school, and our town." He cared so much about being one united team, working together, that he would show us movie clips to motivate us and make us realize that we're one team sharing a common goal. We were better working together to get us where we want to be. Not only did this apply to sports, but it applies to working with other people, which is something we'll have to do all of our lives. He has such passionate personality. It is this kind of passion about coaching a team that you won't get in many others. The time and effort he put into making us better softball players and better young ladies is unbelievable. Rosenbloom is someone who I know relates to kids in middle school and is great at what he does. Almost all of the players he has had in past seasons, including myself, are still in touch with him today. Coach Rosenbloom left his mark on all of us, and it would be great if he could continue leaving his mark on future players. I cannot have imagined playing middle school softball with any other coach, and I know younger girls would appreciate having the same wonderful experience that I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad.
Good evening. My name is Jim Vanneveer. My daughter Alyssa Vanneveer just left the podium. She's a senior at Hillsborough High School. This year, last year, played along with several of the ladies in the room on our state championship team. And I'm proud to let you know that this Wednesday, she will sign her national letter of intent to play softball at Penn State University. And there are an awful lot of people in this room that I have to thank for that. Rich Rosenbloom is one of those folks. He spent hours and days with Alyssa, teaching her not only how to play on the field, but also how to become a better person. I know Alyssa looks up to Rich as a mentor and will forever. One of the things I remember about how Rich brought integrity to our lives was in the 7th grade, Alyssa was struggling in school. And, and as parents, we were pretty tough. And softball was the most important thing to her at that time in her life. And we made a decision as parents, and she mattered, I think, to the, to playing. And if, she likely would have been starting catcher, probably in the middle of the lineup, all that good stuff. And I reached out to Rich and said, "I'm sorry, Rich. Alyssa's grades aren't where they need to be. Alyssa's not going to be playing in the middle school this year." And he could not, and I was concerned from the perspective of, well, she may not play 8th grade, she may not play in high school, all those good things, right, as parents worry about. He didn't have to think twice. He said, "You do what you need to do. Academics are more important." So Alyssa, so that's just one of many, many examples, and that I could go on, and I'm sure others will. Alyssa and I travel the country playing. She plays travel softball. So I get a unique opportunity to speak with many, many people about middle school coaches, high school coaches, and the horror stories, frankly, that folks talk about going on. We are very fortunate here in Hillsborough to have the leadership we do in the softball program from the middle school all the way up to the high school. These are people that care about our children and have taken a personal responsibility for making them better people. So I don't know what I can really ask you to do, but I really think you ought to think about what's going on here. I think Rich is a good person. I think he's a good coach, and he's someone that should still be in the program, and we're really lucky to have him.
Thank you, Mr. Vanneveer.
Good evening. My name is Ray Handel. My daughter is a senior currently at the high school. I have a younger daughter that is a sophomore right now. I think most of the things you will hear here tonight, along with some of, some of the girls and some of the other parents, are going to talk to you not about softball, but about Rich Rosenbloom as a person, a teacher, and a mentor. My oldest daughter played for him at the middle school. She's currently playing at the high school. She can't be here tonight, or else she would probably be speaking most of these words to you. She actually instructs a class at Paramount Gymnastics currently. She wants to be a teacher, a special ed teacher, actually. There are two people that made an impact in her life to do that. One was a 4th grade teacher, Mrs. Bazome, who I'm sure a lot of you know. And the other is Rich Rosenbloom. That's probably because both of them taught her a lot about character, taught her a lot about compassion and being a human being as opposed to just being an athlete. The athlete part, she's handled fine. But the other things she learned, not only from my wife and I, but again, from teachers along the way. And I'm sure just about all the adults in the room can think back, and there's somebody that made an impact on their life at some point. Some of them may have been teachers, some of them been coaches or, or a mentor. You may have had an internship at one level and, and looked up to that person. But they had an impact in your life. And again, that's one thing that Rich held to, held to my daughter, that he made an impact on her life. Taught her a lot about responsibility. At a 7th and 8th grade level, especially girls, there's a lot of things going on in their minds and their bodies and everything else to, to teach character at that level and to teach responsibility, respect of others, how to play as a teammate, and how to grow as a person. Tough thing to do at a 7th and 8th grade level. And Rich was able to, and is still, from all the girls that I've seen over the years. By the way, I also coach Hillsborough Hustle Softball. I've coached basketball in the town, NJSIA referee, basketball in high school, et cetera. So I've seen a lot of the students, not only the girls in the softball team, but coming through the physical education department and, and Rich as a teacher. I've seen a lot of the kids that he's had an impact on. One of those is my, is my younger daughter, the sophomore. She never played softball, but she knew Rich here, and he looked out for her. He made sure that she was taking care of the grades, that she was growing as a person. And he always said, "My door is always open. If you ever have any problems with other students, you need to just talk. You need an open ear. By all means, come in my office, and I'll be more than happy to talk to you and help you out in any way you can, or any way I can," is what he said. So again, I'm here as many of the other parents, and I don't want to take up everyone's night. I could stand up here and talk forever about, about Coach Rosenbloom. And most of you that know me know that I do this for a living, speaking on microphones, so I could do this for a long time. But I do want to stress to you that to think of Rich Rosenbloom not just as the coach, but as the human being and the teacher and the mentor, not just teacher when I say classroom teacher, as teaching things about life. And a life teacher is probably worth a lot more than a softball coach or even a teacher in the classroom, because they leave that impact, as I said earlier, they leave the impact on your life, not just in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Handel.
Good evening. My name's Vincent Pezza, and I have three children who have gone through Hillsborough Middle School. And Rich Rosenbloom has affected every one of them. My youngest son, Nicholas, is now a freshman in high school, and I will tell you, Rich looked up to him, he looked up to Rich, sorry, and he always felt comfortable going to him. I have a daughter who's a junior in high school who wasn't on the softball team, but again, always comfortable with Rich because as people spoke before me said, "The life lessons, the mentor. It's not about the softball and about the wins. If you do those things and you mentor the kids, you give them life's lessons, everything else will come, and you will win on the softball field." But that wasn't what was important to Rich. My main message here today is my oldest daughter, Alexis, who graduated Hillsborough High School last year, played with Rich the two years at the middle school, played four years of varsity at the high school, and is now a freshman at Lehigh University. I will tell you till this day and through the years of high school, she felt comfortable coming back to Rich all the time and speaking to him. As a coach, as a mentor, as someone she looked up to to always give the right advice. And my daughter obviously can't be here today because she's at Lehigh, but I will tell you, she feels comfortable to this moment to go to him. And to me, that's what a middle school, high school teacher, that's one of the things they should be doing, to make sure they tell those kids, "You can always come to me. I'm not just your teacher now. You can come to me anytime." And like I said, my daughter Alexis, today, she will stand, if she could be here, she could tell you that Mr. Rosenbloom is a friend today, and she can go to him with anything she'd like to speak about. And I think that's very important. And I'm not sure why we'd want to remove somebody from the system when a kid feels that way about her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pezza.
Good evening. James Barbiuto. My daughter is Kayleen Rizzo. She played for Coach Rosenbloom also. My story is basically the same as the rest of the gentleman that came up here. He was a great coach, great life coach. He just did everything right. And it's, like they said, it's hard to find coaches and teachers that care that much about the kids and how they grow and what their life is going to be like later. I know he loves when the girls, Kayleen came home. Every year she comes home, she can't wait to run over and go see Coach Rosenbloom. We live a couple of minutes from the middle school, so she'll go run over there with a couple of her friends just to go see him, see how his new kids are and how he feels about the new season. I have a little two-year-old Nicholas who's going to be coming through the educational system, and I would really love for Coach Rosenbloom to still be in his position when I get there, when Nicholas gets there. Because he's definitely the type of teacher and coach that I believe should be in the educational system here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob Schwankert. I can't sit up here all night like Ray. I'm not a speaker. But I am here to support Rich. I have three kids that finished throughout, they've finished their high school years. My daughter played for Rich. I've had a lot of experiences with coaches in the town. My, my daughter played a number of sports throughout her time in the system, as, as did my son. When you find a coach, and a coach that does all the things right, it, it makes me question, I, I'm very disappointed that I'm here tonight. I truly am. My kids are out, out of school, and I'm wondering what's wrong with the system, to be honest. Here's a guy, went through the system, we met this guy, I said, "Here's a guy that gets us. These are the people we want. These are the kids I want coaching my daughter." My daughter, she wants to go back and see him. He's out there. He supports the kids. I, I just don't get why I'm here, and I'm disappointed that I'm here. I, I guess, you know, I don't have a, he's a class, he's a class act, he's a class coach. I, I can't say much more than that. I, I can, I can get Ray, I can get all the words from Ray, and I can, I can keep going on and on. But somewhere, you're missing the boat here. And I'm not sure how this process works, but there's something wrong with the process, because you're missing something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Juan Prieto, 1 Earring Road in Hillsborough. I can only speak about Coach Rosenbloom in positive ways. My daughter is a freshman in high school this year. She played for Coach Rosenbloom last year. I can only follow the words of all these parents. I've been around a lot of coaches for many, many years. I coach Little League, some of you. I coach high school. I've coached girls softball. I'm currently the team psychologist for the New York Mets as well. So I'm around a lot of athletes, a lot of coaches, who look out after the well-being of their players. And I haven't come across anyone at any level like Coach Rosenbloom. And I'll tell you one story that impacted me last year. The girls had a wonderful year. They made it to the championship game. And they were in a very tight game, in the championship game. And towards the latter part of that game, Coach Rosenbloom comes out to the field and takes out the starters. And all of us in the field were like, "Is he crazy?" We're winning by one run, and he takes out all the starters, including the pitcher, to put in other girls who had not played that game. But also to acknowledge the girls who had played with him as 7th graders, so they can get the acknowledgement as 8th graders of the support that they had given him and he had given them. So I think this is a man who is beyond being a coach. I think he looks out for the best interest of the girls. I personally would go every single day and pick up my daughter after school. And Coach Rosenbloom was always the last one there to leave. I never saw the girls unattended. He was always there for the girls, and many times he would, and my daughter unfortunately was one of those who liked to stay the last and be talking to her friends. And he would stay there, even though he had to drive a long way home to be with his own family. So I hope that you guys think through the whole process, and not allowing a coach like Coach Rosenbloom to remain in Hillsborough, I think would be a big mistake and a tragedy to our girls who have, you know, really have done great with them, as you've heard from some of our other girls tonight. So I hope you reconsider your decision today. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Al Savarino. I have a daughter Alyssa, who played with Coach Rosenbloom last year. Anything that I could say would just be redundant to what 10 ladies last week had to say, 4 young ladies this week had to say, and 5 or 6 parents had to say. At this point, I guess, my confusion is, why are we here? What is it that Coach Rosenbloom did that put us all in this position? From what I understand, you have an athletic director who's been here a year, who resigned last year, prior to resigning lets Coach Rosenbloom go, and then decides to come back. So you have the words of a person that, or the decision of a person that's been here one year, less than one year, versus people that have been invested in this community, in this school, pay the taxes here for more than one year, for many, many years, with a lot of good stories, a lot of success, and obviously this coach has instilled the kind of character and type of young ladies that we want in this world. So we very much, our sincerest wish here today is that you guys reevaluate, reconsider, and hopefully walk away from this meeting today saying, "This is ridiculous," and make a decision that is right, that is fair, and that is the best interest of our children and not in the best interest of one athletic director or somebody else. Thank you.
Any other new business? Okay, thank you. Whoa, there we go, great. For those of you who have spoke, thank you very much. Sincerely appreciate it. Looks like we've got some Robo Raiders that are coming up.
Hello. My name is Alina Devay. Last year I was the public relations for Team 75 Robo Raiders. Some of you may remember me from when I spoke at these meetings last year. This year I am secretary and will be introducing our new public relations manager, who will be discussing our 2013 summer events, Joshua Prince.
Thank you, Alina. So as Alina mentioned, I'm the new public relations representative for Team 75, and I would just like to go into what we did over this past summer while the Board of Ed meetings were not going on. So we started with an Apple and Books demo in mid-June, and this is where we showed preschoolers our robot, Eleanor, and we gave them a glimpse and an insight into Team 75 and why it's good to join FRC teams. Then, we hosted a summer enrichment camp. As I'm sure you guys know, we have a very thriving summer enrichment program here in Hillsborough, and we decided that why not make a camp specifically for FRC and building robots? So we got many young kids, middle schoolers, to come to this summer enrichment camp, and through this we were able to build relations with the community and the youth. Very good relations. Then we went on to the Intrepid demo. This is where we went to the Battleship Intrepid Sea, Air, and Space Museum at their second annual Space Fest. And along with Teams 1340, 2016, and 3314, we represented first at this event. With several robots showing off their capabilities and skills at once, it was a popular destination for pedestrians to stop and appreciate the future of engineering. While we had their attention, we would tell them about Team 75 and first, about how to build robots. Next, we had a demo at, well, along with an organization called Homefront. And this is an organization that works with underprivileged kids. And while we were with Homefront, we showed off our robot and represented first to over 90 underprivileged kids, also showing them the allure of joining STEM fields. Next was the 4H Fair. I'm sure many of you have heard of this. This is the Somerset County 4H Fair. And under the science tent, along with many other science presentations, we showed kids the fun of building robots, really, for this one. And elementary kids looking for fun with the robots had a great time. Then we went on, did a YMCA demo, and... What would I say? At this YMCA demo, there was a camp that the YMCA holds every year, and we showed the kids our robot Eve, who was tossing around basketballs into the goals and tossing them to the kids in the crowd, and they would catch it, and they'd be so happy because they'd be like, "Oh, I'm catching a basketball." So they had a lot of fun with that. I think we made a real impact on their lives there. Maybe not their lives, but at least their day. And then some other offseason events. We participated in the Duel on the Delaware and Monte Madness. These are two offseason events held every year. And our robot Pinnacle and our new drivers that we just got, were able to show off their skills and talents, and we placed well in both competitions, showing our year-round commitment to first. Also during this summer, we did several fundraising events, including two car washes and a golf gala, which helped raise a lot of money for our very expensive Hillsborough club. So, thank you all. Thank you, Board of Ed, and have a great night.
Okay, seeing no other public comment for new business, any new business from board members? Mr. Gillette?
Yeah. I just wanted to say, there's obviously a lot of interest in the middle school softball coach. I was wondering if Dr. Schiff, or maybe Mr. Whitlock, actually, could tell us for the board and the public what the obligations are of the board regarding confidentiality of employees, and if there are any rights that the employee has in such a matter? I don't know. I'm sorry to throw it out.
Oh, no problem.
What, you know, what are the obligations for confidentiality, and if the employee has any other rights?
Well, certainly, the employees enjoy confidentiality rights, so the board is not at liberty to discuss the details of a personnel matter. And there are procedural recourse, there is procedural recourse, that an employee has when not renewed.
Can I do a follow-up? Mr. Kins? So is there ever a possibility for the public to know details of such a matter, just in general? I believe, I'm trying to lead you now, I'm going to lead the witness a little bit, since you're an attorney. Deploy, can an employee ever waive, or can employee ever, not waive, can employee ever enforce his right to have a hearing in public over this matter?
Well, the procedural steps, there are steps that lead up to an informal hearing before the board. An employee can request that, an informal hearing before the board. That would not be out in the public, but that employee would also have the right to request that that informal, I shouldn't say hearing, that informal presentation before the board take place in public. An employee can make that request.
So if the employee made that request, that would be the only way the public would be privy to confidential matters?
That would be correct.
And it would have to come from the employee?
Yes. The board is not at liberty to discuss this in public.
I just wanted that for the other board members to understand.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Okay, committee reports, there are no committee reports in the meeting this week. Yep. Okay. Wow, is it that time already? Moving on, continuing on in the agenda, we have public input on the 2014-15 budget. I guess at this, beginning of that time. So this is between now and March is where every meeting, there'll be a specific agenda item where we will solicit input from the public with regard to the budget for the future year's budget, 2014 through 2015. So it's an opportunity, for those of you who aren't here, who are perhaps watching this by YouTube or on the cable channel, it's an opportunity to provide feedback input as to what you feel are budget priorities for the upcoming year. Oh, we have some.
Maria Dulucia, 122 South Triangle Road. Going forward for your budget, I would respectfully request you can reconsider putting the homework help center back into your budget for the next year. We were denied the funding for this year because it was a priority, but not a high priority. I've had many teachers come up to me and say, "When is it starting?" Said it is not. We did not receive the funding this year. There is a need, there is a need for students who need help, that they can have one-to-one assistance from a teacher, either before or after school, or whenever the time would be deemed appropriate. And I just wish that you would reconsider. I know now that this year the library is open. Before school, the hours are staggered, and it's open by the librarians and the computer teachers. However, you do have a lot of students that could actually use one-to-one assistance, and I would respectfully request that you put that back in. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now I'd like to open up the floor to comments from the public regarding the action agenda. And then comments from the board regarding the action agenda will take place during that time. So, leading on with the action agenda, I'll hand it off to Dr. Schiff.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education: to approve travel and related expenses, the HIB investigative list, the overnight trips is listed, the submission of the fiscal year 2014 NCLB amendment, to approve the submission of the revised NJ CUSAC statement of assurance, to approve revised policies for second reading, including acceptable use for using the computer network and the harassment, intimidation, and bullying policy, as well as people smoking policy. To approve family math sessions as listed.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through A7 of the action agenda. So moved? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On the education agenda. Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I ask for the board's consideration of the motions that I'm making under the area of human resources, to approve the resignations, contract changes, intramural contracts, leaves of absences, as well as the revised leaves of absences, approve the appointments of long-term subs, substitutes. I'm going to pull B6.3.1, as well as B6.3.2. To approve mentors and buddies is listed, student teachers is listed, as well as approve supervision of pals' club. To approve the independent reading level assessment training, to approve the revised long-term substitutes.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through B10, excluding item B6.3. So moved? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations: to approve the M1 comprehensive maintenance plan, to approve the revised bylaw for second reading, to approve the revised policies for second reading, including smoking in the school building and on school grounds, to approve the inter-local transportation service agreement with the Somerset County Ed Services Commission, to approve the donation of 564 dictionaries for our 3rd graders. Thank you very much to the Hillsborough Rotary Club.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C1 through C5 of the action agenda.
So moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Want to exclude?
Separate out C4.
Okay. All right, so this is a motion to approve items C1 through C3 and C5. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C4.
So moved? Second?
Okay. Any discussion? No. Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Upstayed.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Just for clarification, it has a majority of the members here, and it doesn't require a full majority vote. Okay. Old business. Any old business from the public?
I have a lot to say tonight, I guess. Maria Dulucia, 122 South Triangle Road. Let me, I'd just like to add another comment on my request from before. We saw over 1,000 students last year that we assisted at the homework help center, so I think that that should be taken into consideration. What I'm here for now is I was wondering if you'd had any feedback on the voting in the schools that took place in the middle school and the high school of this year. I have some for you, but I'd like to know if you've had any feedback.
There has been correspondence to the board, it's not listed in the agenda. There was, the majority of those, I would say, had a more concern about having voting at the middle school and the high school.
I am concerned as well, and it's been many years. We've had small elections in the schools, but never an election as large as this one. We had an election on October, and then again last week. As an employee working in the building, it was uncomfortable. It was uncomfortable having the door, the building open and people coming in and out throughout the day. We were passed brochures and information in the parking lot as we were attempting to come into work. There were people, there was electioneering in process. It was uncomfortable because even though there was law enforcement... It was uncomfortable because even though there was law enforcement present, I still found voters down by the gym, nowhere near the library where they were supposed to be, trying to find their way out of the building. One officer could not be everywhere at once. And I just found it uncomfortable changing classes, that you had senior citizens, who some of them require some assistance walking, and now you had lots of students in the hallway. It was uncomfortable, I thought, for them. And I felt the safety of the students was a concern, and I would like you to consider, although I know that we've had it taken out of the elementary schools, I'd either like you to consider not having school, making it a teacher-in-service day again, or something, not having the schools open during the large elections. It was, it was a concern. I mean, there were some parts of the building who didn't even know that an election was going on. But those of you that, we don't have a way to lock off the library for people to just go in and out of one entrance. That's not possible, because then you would be blocking students from the nurse's office, you would be blocking students from the main office, parents as well. So I, either I urge you to find a different location or to not have it in the schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. We work collaboratively with the, with our police department on security issues and have had multiple conversations about it. This was the first large general election. It was a gubernatorial election, as well as an election where we voted for all state senators and assemblymen and women. We are going to be discussing calendar for next year and the next few months coming up. So we will have an after-action discussion with the operations committee, sharing your concerns, as well as the concerns that we've, we've received, and we'll make decisions moving forward on it.
Any old business from board members? Okay. The informational information is in the agenda, and I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Abstentions. Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.